Welcome everyone to the Bryan City Council Meeting for Monday, April 6, 2015. First on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the March 16 meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, number two is the Hearing of Public Concerns. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to number three on the agenda and ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number nine, 2015, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve a purchase order to M-Tech Company for the purchase of a demo stock sweeper unit for the Bryan Street Department through the state purchasing program at a total cost of $206,918, hereby waiving the competitive bidding process prescribed by Ohio Revised Code 127.16A3 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Instrom.
What is the company?
Your papers are on.
It says Johnson North American, yours it should be M-Tech, which we just corrected that five minutes ago.
I am correcting it as we sit here.
How you spelling that, Lori?
He spelled it M, space, tech, T-E-C-H, space, company.
Go ahead Tyson.
This is to replace our swerve sweeper that is, the 2005, so it's 10 or 11 years old now, and needs replaced.
Now this is the amount of money we discussed, I mean it's not changed?
It hasn't changed at all.
And are we, we talked about some repairs on the old one, are we going to mess with that to try to use it or not?
No, if I write the PO tomorrow, we could have this sweeper next week.
Right, but I mean, have the other one as a backup or use it or something like that?
No, we're trading it in.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Gotcha. Okay, I move to suspend him.
I'll second that.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Move or adopt.
Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is another ordinance, please number and read.
Ordinance number 10, 2015, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending April 30, 2015. This is a transfer of $250,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 General Fund for general spending purposes, a transfer of $250,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 203 Motor Vehicle Street Fund for general spending purposes as well as the street sweeper you've just approved, and a transfer of 1/2% income tax fund to the 505 sewer drain maintenance fund of $50,000. Total amount of transfers requested, $550,000.
I'll make a motion to suspend. Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second?
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Number five on the agenda is another ordinance, please number and read.
Ordinance number 11, 2015, an ordinance providing for renewal appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request to the 203 Street Department Fund for $206,918 for a street sweeper as previously approved.
Move or suspend?
I'll second that.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Number six on the agenda is another ordinance, please number and read.
Ordinance number 12, 2015, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute various quitclaim deeds to transfer real estate from the City of Bryan to respectively known owners along State Route 111, Defiance, Ohio, to correct legal descriptions due to topographical changes.
Thanks to Max and the BPA approving this before, I'm actually reflecting from his article to reflect topographical changes over the past few decades, the City of Bryan updating its deeds and landowners along Ohio 111 and Defiance County. Ohio 111 lines along the Oglay's River, which Bryan uses to generate power with this Oglay's hydroelectric plant located south of the city of Defiance. Bryan Municipal Utility and Director Bryan Carlin told the board at their last meeting that a new property owner, that new property along Oglay's had been brought up to his attention, some discrepancies between the topographical information on the deeds and the actual layouts of land as exists today were not correct. These have been corrected, and according to Bryan, he said over the years, some of the backflow areas and the lagoons have been filled with dirt, and this measure will reflect those changes. Several years ago, I don't know just what date, do you have that, Rhonda, when we went down to Paulding?
No, that's, yeah. What happened was they purchased the Oglay's hydro, they also received property along the Oglay's at an elevation level of 692 feet. There's different areas that are lagoons, backflow, backwater areas, that when there's a rush of water, those areas spill up, and that allows us to have that area there to keep it from damaging the trash rakes and those kind of things on the Oglay's. Well, some of these areas have become filled in, and there was actually a couple locations where we fought to get that cleaned out and keep that open. This happens to be four properties where there was a lagoon area that basically no longer exists, so to correct the legal descriptions for the owners of those properties and just include that land in their legal descriptions, they've asked for these corrections.
Unfortunately or unfortunately, the mayor has to sign that.
So that's why it's here. The board has made a resolution to ask for you to approve those deeds.
Well, it sounds like we need to.
What's your wishes, gentlemen? Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Move or we approve?
Second?
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is another, is a resolution, please number and read.
Resolution number eight, 2015, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for administration of the revolving loan fund for the State of Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency.
Okay, as you know, actually, Moamy Valley helps us with our CDBG funding and so forth, however, every year or so, we have to sign permission for me to sign the agreements after Moamy Valley has approved that, to be able to get the CDBG's, I suspect, community developed block grants, and some companies do apply for that, there's certain rules and regulations that they must have to get some of those funds, but in order for us to participate, this resolution has to be in place for us to get dollars. So it's kind of a yearly thing that we approve this one.
I move that we suspend.
I'll second that.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to ban. Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Number eight on the agenda is an ordinance, please number and read.
Ordinance number 13, 2015, an ordinance amending section 753.01 to 753.99 of chapter 753, solicitors, canvassers, and peddlers of the City of Bryan codified ordinances and rescinding any section inconsistent herewith.
Basically, this is put in as we've had some trouble in the last several years of people going door to door, and what they, we had a, actually about the third page, 753.06 is where the big change takes place, if it's big at all, but we would charge $25, and they come to our office and they got to get a permit to go door by door. In order to do that, they have to go up to the police station and get a clear, and that's for one person to go door to door, and then they come back, and we give them permission to do that for one month. However, what happens is that, what's been happening is one person will come, get the $25 permit, and then four or five will be in the car ready to go door to door. The other thing is that the products that they're selling are some of the same things that our local people have, that they can go to the store and buy at different places, and I'm not going to name any particular object, but they can go and buy locally, whereas the local people here to sell their product, they're advertising in the paper, or the radio, or on the TV, and something like that. So, actually, we changed it from $25 to $50 per month, and in talking with the other towns, some go as high, and the other ones in the county, at our mayor's meeting, some go as high as charging $100 per person, because that's all you're going to get back from particular people. Now, this doesn't involve any of our people selling fruits and vegetables, it has nothing to do with anything that we're doing now, and we can excuse.
So, we're okay with charitable?
Charitable organizations and things of that nature.
That would be the only question, because.
Yeah, charitable, Lions Club, everything is just the same.
In my industry, when we start a business, you have to start door to door, and I would hope there's enough flexibility in here where the mayor has some discretion with it.
Well, as I say, it's just $50 for one person, and actually, we've had some, a good example, last summer, we had a, last few summers, we've had a student going, selling books, and real legitimate, but boy, as soon as somebody knocks on that door, people are calling and say, "Do you have permission to do that?", and most of the time, they don't, and it's legitimate. The other thing is in the hours, I think we put in.
Six to, or, until 9 o'clock, it's something like that?
No, that's back.
10 to 6.
10 to 6. I've had people complaining of people going door to door after 6 o'clock at night, even though the time changes and everything, but they, around supper hour, people getting ready for somebody else, they're getting ready for bed and everything else, they didn't like that, so. It hasn't been a great big thing, but there's enough people that are taking advantage of this, I think they should pay us a little more to do.
But there is some flexibility where you can say yes or no.
I can say yes or no, yes.
Okay, I'm okay with it there.
There's even an appeal process, if you read the whole thing, and you might want to give it one reading, I don't know, but if you, because you can go back and look online and look at the old section, did you change anything else, Rhonda, particular in this?
Well, we did put a little more teeth in it, because if there's a violation, they're required to keep their license or their permit on their person as they're out canvassing, and also requirements that they provide certain information to the mayor, we added a little bit to that, tax ID numbers and so forth, but also if they violate it, it used to just be a minor misdemeanor, and now it's a fourth degree misdemeanor.
But does it have to be just sales of product, going to be any other type of solicitation in it too?
Well, if you look at 753.01B2, it tells you it includes baked goods, fruits and vegetables, dairy products, those types of things, what's determined to be a canvasser, peddler, or solicitor.
And that's always been in there.
That's always been in there.
Yeah. And if you care to give it one reading to see if you get anything, that's, that'll be okay with me.
I think that's kind of where I'd rather approach it.
Yeah, see if anybody comes forward.
I'm making a motion to one reading, the first reading.
And check their book, and, you know, you all have the old ones and check.
Somebody sees it, they have an opportunity to come in and talk to us.
I agree, I'll second that.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Keith?
Number nine on the agenda, we have a hiring for the cemetery. Mr. Instrom?
And again, this year, I'm requesting to hire Jerry Lemons and William Doherty to mow out of the cemetery.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'd like to go back to the ordinance on this permit. I don't show where we, where we can sign that, from being either suspended or first reading, so is that recorded someplace that we?
There is, I had one on my original, but for some reason, yours didn't get copied with the sheet, but Lori has provided on the original.
Okay, so it's on file.
It's on the original.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah, that was a good question. Okay, number 10 is hiring for the parks. Mr. Dominic?
Good evening, guys. It's getting to be that time of year, this is wave number one of park employees, seasonal, part-time, all have been budgeted for, and wages set according to the ordinance that you guys passed earlier in January.
What's your wishes, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to may I?
I'll second that.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben. Number 11 on the agenda is the hiring of patrol officer, Chief Wilson.
I'm asking at this time to hire Derek Beardsley as a full-time patrol officer. This will fill the position that was open when Jeff Arnold retired. He has successfully completed his background check. He did work for Paulding Police Department and part-time at Antwerp Police Department, and both chiefs gave him very good recommendations. He is from the Sherwood area, and for his first 12 weeks, if he is hired, he would be in a field training program, which he would be riding with a full-time officer the entire time, and then he would be evaluated at the end of the 12 weeks. So I'm asking at this time, the council to approve the hiring.
I move to approve. Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Number 12 on our agenda is employee status change for wastewater, mayor, are you going to handle that?
Yeah, Rick is not here tonight, I can handle that. In their negotiated agreement with the city, there were several folks there that needed to obtain their operator license in order to continue employment with the city, and it's very important that we have licensed operators, and Josh Harper took the course and was able to pass his Operator One wastewater license, he obtained a license, and he was hired back 8/21 of '07, but the pay for this particular license is retroactive back to the day that I received his license, and in effect is 3/25 of 2015. I received the license that he had passed out, and it was after, we didn't have another meeting since that time, so his pay will be retroactive according to agreement, and it was received by me back by 3/25, 2015. So we're happy that he got, he took the initiative to get that, get that license, and we still are working on a couple other ones to do the same, so I recommend we award Josh Harper his license.
Okay, so again, my, there's two dates here, I guess I'm a little confused, it says effective date is March 3, and then the pay is retroactive back to 3/25.
Yes.
What's the difference?
The effective date would have been March 3, is when I made that out, but I did not have the license, according to the agreement, I had to have the license in my possession, and I did not get that until 3/25 was added, so he would not go back that far. Effective date of this increase is 3/25, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Already approved. Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, we've been encouraging those workers to get their advanced certifications, and we really appreciate Mr. Harper doing that. Number 13 on the agenda is we have a discussion for the district. Mayor?
Yeah, I received a letter from the Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control on March 13. It stated that we are writing to notify you that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in your political subdivision will expire on June 1, 2015. In order to maintain permit privileges, every permit holder must file a renewal application. It's up for them to do that. Ohio Revised Code provides a legislative authority with the right to object to any renewal of a permit and to request a hearing, and you know, as they bring the permits or have in the past, all those that are selling or have liquor license now, we have approved for them to be, to be there. So, this is just a letter notifying us that their licenses will expire, if there's any problems, we might get some back to review, if there's any questions and so forth, we don't know that we're going to get that, but otherwise, it's just a notice to us for that.
Well, I guess you're saying we get notified, I guess, when I read this, I thought it would, if we have, it appears that if we have some issues, or we've had some issues with some, some businesses that have liquor, that, you know, we can, is it up to our attorney or the police chief to say, hey, you know, is that how this works, though, I mean, do you guys review everybody with a liquor license, and we go over, so we can have a place that has fights and disturbances and things like that, and we're still going to approve it?
I thought this continued our authority to continue.
To do that.
To hold, you know, to.
Hold hearings.
What do I want to say, stop the hearing, not to have the hearing, if we so desire.
That's if they change something, though, right?
You, their liquor license is going to renew. When their liquor license renewed, you get a notice, or if somebody's applying for a liquor license, you get a notice to determine whether you want a hearing for the state liquor board to allow them to have it.
Okay.
Then you get this, I think it's annual or semi-annual notice, that if you have any issues with any liquor permit holder, then you can notify the Department of Commerce that you have an objection.
Okay, I guess.
It doesn't mean that they're going to revoke their license, but.
Right, I guess that was what I was trying to get to here, is that, where does that come from? I mean, you know, like, I'm not aware of any issues with people that have permits. I think it would go back to you and the police chief, whereas if you've had situations with a particular business, that, so we're not going to, that's not going to be reviewed until it comes back, say, the permit, they're asking to renew their permit, and at that time, somebody comes forward and say, "I don't think we should."
Yeah, I think where you're getting, going to get that is they're going to get themselves in trouble, if there'd be investigation of one of the local establishments doing that, the federal people would come in, and we wouldn't be the one necessarily refueling license, it would probably be the liquor control board themselves on the police department, and then after the fact, if they'd reapply on something, then we would have the opportunity to either reject, I think that's how that worked. We've never had it, we've never had that situation.
No, but anybody from federal come in, they'd have to get the information from our police chief.
Right, and if they're, if they're doing things in a, in a bar or establishment that's selling that, they, the state would get involved with that, and would go to the police, that's my understanding of it.
Right.
This is just to notify the council of what's happening.
We don't act upon this, do we?
No, this was just a notice.
Just a notice?
Notice, notice to the council.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on it? All right, then we'll move on to item number 14, which is posting a position with recycling department. Mr. Instrom?
Good evening again, I would like your permission to post the job at the recycling center of vehicle operator, to be the opening cause from Lauren Halbert retiring at the end of the month.
I move that we post, we're allowing to post. Second?
Rick Hoope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our agendas, so at this time, we'll go around and see if anyone has anything to add to this. Judy, no, Ben? Tyson? Chief? How about Mr. Hoope? No, okay, Chief Wilson? Mr. Bieber? No. Okay, does the media wish? Okay, we'll go down here to tell me.
No, nothing.
And Rick? Nothing tonight? Okay, Dick Reed? No. Dick Wright? No, sir. Mayor?
Yes, in the back, you will see that all the reports, the BPA minutes, the monthly reports. From time to time, I am asked to give proclamations, and just to point out a couple, the times has it, they're not going to put every proclamation in, I think I probably write. Uh, from time to time, uh, I am asked to give the proclamations and, uh, just to point out, uh, a couple. Uh, the times has it that they're not gonna put every proclamation in. I think I probably write, uh, two or three a month for different organizations. But one is the Arbor Day proclamation. Of course, we, it being a tree city and so forth, we, uh, take a lot of this, uh, what they do for us and for our city. And this is a, a proclamation, you see Arbor Day, uh, they're gonna celebrate that on the twenty-fourth day of April, uh, here in Bryan. And, uh, they're going to have some events of planting some trees and so forth and it's been going on for a long time. And then that's one proclamation. The other one that I was asked to write, uh, to, uh, to the, uh, cancer group, the prostate cancer. Other than skin cancer, prostate cancer is the most common cancer in American men. And it gives some statistics and it says that, uh, they want me to recommend and proclaim September, which is, uh, going to be a, uh, Ohio, you know, hopefully nationwide thing. That, uh, September of twenty fifteen is going to be, uh, prostate, uh, cancer awareness month all over. So these are just a couple of things I was asked to write and then I get it back to the organizers of this proclamation. Just wanted to make you aware of some things that are happening here, so I guess that's it.
Rhonda? Lori?
No, sir.
Okay, that concludes everything that we wanted to do. So at this time, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Pro move. Second?
Rick Coopy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your adjournment.